This meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel as well as the town's Facebook. I will call the meeting to order at seven P M. Good evening and welcome to everyone who has joined the council and myself here this evening to the town in Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. We'll call the meeting to order shortly, or I've done that. And so now we're gonna say the pledge of allegiance. And we're gonna follow that with a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In that moment of silence, please. Okay, first things first, public comments. Joe, has anybody signed up for?
No one has signed up there.
Okay, well, I wanna welcome everyone that has come to the meeting in the gallery despite the fact you have nothing to share with us this evening. Um, no, I really do appreciate the attendance. Um, so this evening we have a consent agenda with two items on it, but I'm going to actually pull the minutes from the consent agenda because Council President Carter wasn't present for our last meeting, so in order for us to approve these items, we have to do them separately because I assume she will abstain. So that being said, I assume everyone that has reviewed the minutes has presented any kind of amendments or anything that's necessary, otherwise. Yes, sir?
I did make a suggestion. There was an incorrect line. I assume it's been corrected.
Yes, sir. Fantastic. Alright, with that then, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty eight, twenty twenty four?
So moved.
Thank you, Council. Excuse me, Councilman Dyer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Excuse me, Councilman Grassley. I came down without my water of all nights. All in favor.
You gotta go home?
No, I talked to you. All in favor of approval of the minutes from the October twenty eight, twenty twenty four meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as amended. Thank you. Please say aye. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to the second item on the consent agenda, which is the reappointment of Judy Walters to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term, expiring August twenty twenty seven. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda with item number two, with the reappointment of Judy Walters.
Thank you so much. Uh, any questions or anything like that before we vote?
Need a second?
Second?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you so much. Apparently I need more than water. Any other questions? Any questions for staff with the motion on the table? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda inclusive of the second item only, please say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Fantastic. Alright, consent agenda is approved. Here we are with new business, uh, the presentation of the Maryland two fifty, which is something we're all looking forward to. We have our Gatehouse curator, Adrian Smith. Thanks, Adrian, for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me here. Today I'm gonna be presenting to you about what's gone on over the last almost year so far um, at the state and local level with the Maryland two fifty. Um, there is a Q R code for anybody watching at home that links to the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Resource page that has a lot to do with all of this, and you also have on the handout that I gave each of you um, this evening, that same Q R. Um, it has most of the links to the people and the landing pages for all of these different things. It is quite a lot of information, so if you have any questions and the um, contacts on that sheet don't match up with you or you have other questions for me, of course, reach out. Um, I am just a messenger in this meeting, but I will do the best I can to answer your questions. The one thing I wanted to make very clear about this resource about the Heart of the Civil War Heritage area is that the Maryland two fifty commission is about the celebration of seventeen seventy six, so it's the semi sesquicentennial, big word. So just to make sure that that's very clear, that it's really about the revolution, and here in the state of Maryland, it's really the revolution through the War of eighteen twelve is what they're focusing on, but as you'll see, there's a bit more to it. So Carrie, if you could. So here in Sykesville, um, Joe and I have come up with a statement here. The town of Sykesville will work alongside our community partners in the promotion and celebration of the last two hundred and fifty years of growth and transformation, honor our shared history, and foster a sense of belonging that reflects our pursuit to be an inclusive and welcoming place for all. So this is just an overarching statement. Nothing is set in stone yet, but it kind of ties together a lot of the ideas of these different groups that you'll see how we landed at this point so far. Alright, so in the beginning here, um, the biggest things that we've been working on are making sure that the community is aware that the Maryland two fifty is a thing. Um, and that's our biggest step. We've decided to go with the American Association for State and Local History's Guidance under the theme of the Power of Place. Um, and there are a bunch of different pieces to that that we'll talk about in a minute. Um, but we're really trying to, here in our town with its origination in nineteen oh four, think about how we can add on to our already extant events. We don't really have any revolutionary or really even War of eighteen twelve tie-ins that are really profound, and so working on ways that we can work with our community partners to kind of extend and draw on these resources that are specific to this from a state level and even higher than that. Um, and again, we have that Q R code that links to a lot of those different things. Um, over the next year, we'll be developing a lot of ideas having to do with our Civics Day Celebration. We're looking at doing that on your Investiture Day that's coming up on Monday, May nineteenth, probably. Um, not quite set in stone on that one, but Joe and I discussed that briefly today. And also expanding on what was called the Civic Season. So one of the ideas shared at the state level is the idea of Juneteenth to July fourth being a civic season that we all should be looking into more. Um, and of course, our Remembrance Day, which several of you attended, um, and extending that celebration. Um, the original executive order for this um, had to do with a um, presidential level at or sorry, at a state level on January of twenty twenty one and then was revised in twenty twenty three. Um, there's a longer statement that goes with that that's very similar to the others. Again, you can see that original order from the state on the links provided. Um, and that goes beyond the Maryland two fifty and beyond guidance. So the idea is here that you wanna have civics involved, which of course our local government does, have service involved on an ongoing basis. And again, that kind of goes with that Maryland two fifty and beyond, which very recently was a theme that was added to, with the idea being that you shouldn't just have a parade one day and call it that. You should be able to come up with programs and things that are gonna carry on to into the future. Um, a lot of the stumbling blocks of earlier celebrations such as the bicentennial, uh, there was a lot of criticism for how those did one-offs or they did a program and then they had no program to sustain those efforts moving forward. Um, this is supposed to collaborate with a lot of other nearby sites. Um, places like the Preservation Maryland, it's run under a gentleman named Nick Redding. They have a lot of different resources having to do with heritage, history, and preservation, and also the Chesapeake Bay Gateways Program through the National Park Service. Um, the head of this section of that is Kristen Klimas. Um, so those kinds of organizations are very heavily engaged in our area and particularly central Maryland, trying to get them to figure out ways that we can interconnect with one another. Um, again, our region is set together with the Heart of the Civil War Heritage area under um, the director of that program is Emily Hubner. Her information is on your handout as well. Um, she typically has been running that level of programming, um, about once a month or every other month that they've had programs to help people get engaged with one another and talk about what each municipality is doing and institution is doing, because this isn't just municipalities, it's individual museums, it's groups of people like the Daughters of the American Revolution. It's all kinds of different people working together to try to make these collaborative, regional, and also global, not global, but United Stateswide initiatives. Um, so again, uh, we talked about civic season and collab- okay, we can go on, yeah. Um, here in Carroll County, um, they have decided to entitle their initiative Carroll Voices America twenty two, two fifty, and they have come up with a symbol that was student-produced, although on their website I did not see any credits for this, so I'm I'm sorry that the student wasn't credited. Um, we are working on our own logo to tag with our collaborative events with our um, D S C and other things for the the programs we have planned. Um, this extends through the county level, celebrating America for for the county level um, promotions, and there are lots of different site-specific events, especially within Westminster, that are planned specifically for the Maryland two fifty events. Um, those range in dates. Most of them aren't until twenty twenty six, but there are others happening, and there are also historic district-specific things happening. Um, I'll be expanding on that next week with the Historic District Commission a little bit more. This is just, as I said, a very broad overview. Um, so the next community forum run at a county level is December fourth in Westminster. Um, so that one is meant for that audience, though. Here in this area, and it's also on your handout as well, there's a local community forum coming up for, again, anybody watching at home as well, to participate at the Eldersburg Library on March twelfth from two to three P M. Um, that is a weekday, um, but anybody who can participate, it's meant to help organize volunteers, to create awareness and that sort of thing. It'll be organized by Laura Bankert over at the Historical Society of Carroll County. Again, her information is on your sheet. Um, and I'll be in contact with her as well as that date moves closer for anything we as a municipality come up with to share with that. Um, so Carroll County's statement, I think, is on the next slide, Carrie. Yeah. So Carroll County also has created a statement so far. They have a committee for this that's established. However, they do not yet have a landing page for this initiative. So despite the fact that lots of stuff is in progress, they don't have a place to go to see it yet, which is why I keep linking the Q R to that Civil War Heritage site. Once that becomes available, I'll make sure to update you on what are more local resources for that information. So their statement is similar to ours, but not exactly the same. Um, Carroll County will celebrate by highlighting its role in U S history through the theme of Carroll Voices. And it goes on from there. This is actually sort of embracing a previous program where they had partnered with C M C, who we partner with for this program, um, in collecting oral histories particularly. And in fact, one of the programs we'll be working on with them is not only collecting additional oral histories, but training people in the public, not only in our historical institutions as a county, but also throughout the public to collect oral histories and how to get those questions in a way that's useful to people in the future. Um, their initiative also focused more on the idea of the roles of diverse people and having the idea of liberty. Of course, Westminster also has a much stronger tie to the revolution than here in Sykesville, so more of their programming has to do with that era of history, and I think that's why they chose this particular word. Okay. So the American Association for State and Local History, and I know a lot of these abbreviations are long and hard to remember. Um, they are a guiding institution. The museum up here at the Gatehouse is a member of the American Association of State and Local History, and they created workshops and programs to help people prepare for this, starting a few years ago, although most of those resources have come out in print in the last year. Um, and also the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area has hosted, as well as other places, um, workshops again for these institutions to work together to kind of brainstorm ideas of how to express these ideas. So again, we chose of the five themes that they had suggested, um, this kind of regional theme of the power of place. And this was chosen, um, because it's very um, specific to environments. And with everything that's going on with our historic district and their planning for our main streets, keep streetscaping and that sort of thing, it really made sense to pick this focus that has to do with natural and built environments, and also what we're thinking about preserving. So not only what today we're saying, oh, this is an old building, and because it's old or whatever, we should be preserving it, but as you move forward and you're building new buildings, what is going to make those buildings worth preserving? I think it's a very interesting question and something I'll be bringing up in a little more detail again in next week's Historic District Commission meeting. Um, this theme also goes with the Downtown Sykesville Connection, who again will be partnering with a lot of our role in the engagement with this Maryland two fifty um, project with the idea of a lovable place, which was from the Maryland Main Street Conference. And so when I talked to Julie De La Maria about this, um, she had some positive things to say, although neither of us especially like the name Power of Place just for sake of simplicity as you look into it, if you choose to go look what the full description is of that, so you can find what other things go with that. Okay. So when we're looking at past celebrations here in Sykesville, I think it's also pretty important to understand that a lot of occasions in that civic season that they're asking us to investigate are not things that historically Sykesville has much of a history of celebrating. So there's lots of reasons for this, and so to kind of get a basis of this, what we did was we looked at our Sykesville Herald newspaper records, which run nineteen thirteen to nineteen seventy nine, so that gives us a pretty broad window of what was going on in town. So you see sort of a range of dates in these advertisements, but especially the early ones, you can see that they are not from Sykesville, they're from Oakland and Winfield and that sort of thing. Sykesville was not really engaged in very many Fourth of July celebrations in particular, because that season was right around the primary election season, and it was also the time of the wheat harvest. So people here were very busy. They weren't really able to produce anything like this until the nineteen thirties and forties, when you see the Fireman's Carnival start to get engaged. So it's fairly recent history that we engaged with um, the celebration of um, our independence at all. And then in more recent history in the nineteen fifties, it becomes very much a religious look at um, our history. And so one of the things that I'm gonna be doing in the next couple of weeks is working with Ryan Melhorn from the Public School System. He's the um, Social Studies Director for Secondary Education. And um, we have a collection of works from a lady named Margarete McCoy, who taught here at Sykesville School, um, mostly fifth through seventh grade, but mostly fifth and sixth grade. Um, and her records show us kind of how they were teaching history from nineteen fifties through the nineteen seventies. And we're gonna see what kinds of things were omitted, what kinds of pieces were people telling you about history versus what was the actual history. And again, this is part of the American Association for State and Local History Guidance, to look at those narratives and what stories were not told, as well as what stories were told, but maybe they were leaving a few things out. Um, so at the museum, we have a lot of other things planned, but again, this meeting is really about giving you a very broad perspective of what has been done in the past. We also have coming up with our next presidential administration. Um, as of May two thousand and twenty three, there's supposed to be a salute to America two fifty that culminates into the Great American State Fair in Iowa. There are some other things that go with that, but the outline is very broad. I'm hoping that once the administration is seated, that we'll have a few more details, as it was stated that that's a day-one agenda item for the Trump administration. So we'll see what happens at a presidential and a national level, but at least on a state level, there's a whole lot here. So, yeah. Alright, so any questions? So this lovely picture is from nineteen seventeen. I absolutely love it, but. So, anyway, any questions about Maryland two fifty?
So who's kind of running the Maryland two fifty? Is it the state level or you?
So it's a state-level leader. Um, the lady who is in charge of it is Michelle Johnson. She's on your sheet as well. Um, so there's a staff of, I believe, six who have been there since January. Um, and so there is a meeting, and I believe it's on your sheet as well, coming up at the state level. Um, they do more or less monthly meetings that are held on Google Meet, and again, people at home, anybody interested can join those meetings and watch them and participate in them.
And then how about Carroll County? Are they?
So, um, Carroll County, there is a committee, as I said, for the Maryland two fifty, and they they have a a webpage, but it doesn't really have much beyond the statement and the logo at this point. Um, most of what I have seen produced has been through the Historical Society of Carroll County, and again, Laura Bankert is the contact for that information. But it is a lot of individual organizations at the county level that are motivating to do very specific programs.
So they don't have a monthly meeting or?
Not really monthly, but um, again, the Westminster meeting that's coming up, as well as the one at the Eldersburg Library, I'm hoping that by those, there will be a few more answers to where to go to find this information locally. Any other questions? I know it's a lot of information.
That's a big task. It looks like a really big task, so thanks for. The logo with that's the official logo for Carroll County? That's the one they?
That's the one they picked. That's not the one.
This is an odd building choice.
It is.
It looks very, well, I don't wanna say it.
It's traffic court.
Yeah.
It's district court.
Yeah.
It's, uh, but anyway.
Yeah.
What's more American than that?
It's 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 an icon. It's an iconic building.
It's about twenty-five years old.
The festivities, the activities, they're gonna be focused in twenty twenty five.
So the Trump administration has said that he wants to focus them January of twenty twenty five through July of twenty twenty six. However, the state initiative, which is, as I said, been around quite a bit longer, has said that it is supposed to start this year, this twenty twenty five coming, and it should go on through at least the end of twenty twenty six. But really, they're really encouraging these to be ongoing projects. So.
So it's like a two-year with with plans to?
With some extensions.
And nobody is, we, I mean, we can.
Nobody is forcing us to do this at all.
Whatever winner.
Um, it it's just been heavily encouraged. So.
But I was gonna say, nobody's telling us when things need to start and when they have to stop, so.
Nope. All of this is really just guidelines from various institutions that are hoping that you'll do it. Yeah.
I mean, we could have a party the same day as Iowa's uh, big shebang and see how many people come here. Thank you, Adrian. I appreciate all your efforts thus far, and I know there are many more to follow. So, alright. So we did have a second item of new business uh, to discuss this evening, but uh, that was the um, agreement for the use of the alley. And due to some ongoing negotiations and discussions, I guess is the more proper word to use at this point, um, we are gonna hold this off until a future agenda. Okay?
Good.
That brings us to. I know, I read a lot too, man. Um. It was the only thing I attended to all day. Um, the next meeting, I'll start with announcements. The next meeting is Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh, we have volunteer opportunities available on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Crossing Guard, and Police Auxiliary. Anyone interested in learning more about these volunteer opportunities or any others, please email town@sykesville.net. Um, I also will announce here, it's interesting, it's probably a little ironic, i- if people are listening to this, they probably already know this. Um, but I was speaking to some friends this weekend at my softball game and announced the Veterans Day event, and they were like, now, if we weren't playing ball with you, how would we have found that out? And I said, well, um, on the town's website, on the town's Facebook page, on my Facebook page, on the Gatehouse Museum's Facebook page. Um, but more importantly, it through that conversation, it was learned that anyone that wants to get the news flashes, um, as we've always been saying, you know, get on that email list. It's as simple as emailing town@sykesville.net, correct?
So they should actually go to the website, and there's a uh, one of the main um, buttons is uh, I think it's notify me is what it is, and they can put in their email and actually choose which uh, notification.
One of those they want to receive. Thank you, Carrie, and I will pass that on personally to the individual who I said needed to email. Um, so the notify button is uh, is where you get on that list uh, for notifications. That brings us to staff updates, and we'll begin with Joe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, so I don't wanna jinx anything, but I think we are actually getting very close to being completed on Springfield Avenue. So if you look close, uh, most of the sidewalks are in. They were finishing up a few things kind of right there in the in the center section. I do need to check with state highways to make sure that, you know, the actual paving schedule uh, is is upcoming, but it looks like construction is certainly gonna be winding down sooner rather than later there. Um, that same contractor will then, once they complete Springfield Avenue, start on our little project on uh, Central, but that that project shouldn't take more than a few months. Well, and again, it won't have nearly the traffic impact that you've seen on Springfield Avenue.
And um, along those same lines, Joe, for the public certification, there is a um, steel plate on Central, right at Brown?
No.
Uh, first, is that first?
Oh, is that a, that's a, that was a county thing.
Okay, so.
I imagine that's either a water or sewer line that they're working on.
Okay, so um, uh, since Central was just paved and they picked a fine time to cut a big hole in it, um, I just wanted the public to know that that's something that we are not involved in. It has nothing to do with our stormwater management project that's about to get underway.
That's correct.
And uh.
Again, just to, uh, I guess give ourselves a little bit of credit here, we do reach out to the county to let them know which roads we are paving.
Yes.
So that if there are projects that we try to coordinate, I imagine whatever this one was, was more of an emergency item, not part of some sort of ongoing, long-term planned replacement.
Okay.
You said you imagined. Are they not informing you properly? That's my concern.
I just haven't asked the right question.
Oh, so you gave me twenty questions. They don't, I'm concerned that they don't let you know ahead of time. That bothers me.
Well, you'll be concerned for the rest of your life.
We tried to make sure they know which.
No one has been more of an advocate in attempting to uh, create a conduit, a two-way conduit of communication with uh, the Department of Public Works at the county than than our town manager.
No, I know he's doing the, the human's job here, it's just I wish, if anybody's listening, I wish they would do a better job of calling him, that's all.
Yes, thank you for that.
He isn't a mind reader in spite of the fact that he seems that way sometimes.
There's there's only a few things happening in town that we gotta keep an eye on, so.
So question on the, on Springfield.
Yes.
Um, sidewalk.
Yes.
So two parts. First, the sidewalk in front of um, the repair shop is very high compared to the driveway road where the pumps used to be. So just curious.
The northern end of Springfield.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I I I'm at the middle school and um, Miller Cooper, there was never a sidewalk there.
Yes.
There's not a very big sidewalk. Yay. And there's a huge. And there's a huge drop between the parking space or the where the pumps used to be.
Yep.
And where the sidewalk is. So I didn't know if in the Planning Commission, if like, if that group in their planning is going to level that. It just seems like a, with all those kids coming there, that's a, it's a, it's a significant.
So again, the the whole idea of having that sidewalk was to prevent people or prevent automobiles from being able to jump that sidewalk. That's why it's as high as it is.
So it's.
Come out of there. So that's planned to be that way.
Okay, so that, so we should expect that it will stay at that height difference between the, okay. Um, and then as you go along
Mm-hmm.
um, towards thirty-two.
Okay.
They took out the sidewalk on Springfield from Main up, from from Main Street up to um, the middle school. They took the sidewalk off, they put brand-new sidewalk down.
Right.
But then when you continue past the um, I don't know, replace, repair shop, I don't even know what we're calling it. The, thank you, the joint property. Um, there wa- there is a sidewalk that is in significant need of repair.
So the the scope of work for that project goes just beyond there's a driveway
Yes.
that serves several properties right there.
Yes.
It's gonna go just past that and then stop.
Okay, so that's a problem, because I, it, just given that we already have equipment out there, if there's any way to leverage that, the sidewalk is li- has literally fallen. So you have the curb, and then you have this sidewalk that comes down. It's a, it's very, very dangerous, and so having walked that frequently, my expectation was as we do the new sidewalk, like, it would have continued and fixed that portion, um, because I know people walk in the street to avoid tripping on that sidewalk.
Okay.
So we have this beautiful new coming up to it, and then.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we can ask state highways to look at that.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, speaking of projects, uh, so we did just finalize the bid package for our South End Streetscape. Uh, so that all started going out to contractors this week. We'll get it on our website, just so the public knows about it as well. Uh, we'll continue conversations, obviously, along the bid process, just to make sure people understand kind of what this project entails. And then certainly before the end of the calendar year, uh, we'll make sure we have a contract in front of council to approve to get that project kicked off uh, in quarter, for our first quarter of next year.
Fantastic.
Are we anticipating that that's gonna use the rest of the ARCA funds or?
Yes, we do.
All of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you quickly describe for everybody who's listening and watching?
Yeah, basically, uh, so Oklahoma Avenue, uh, south along Main Street, and then everything along Baldwin Drive, so that whole area is gonna be uh, let's just say beautified. Uh, the parking lot of Sykesville Station uh, uh, will be reconfigured so that there's actually clear entrances and exits to to that um, uh, that parking lot. Across the street, uh, across from Main Street, where the Vine, the D S E Building, and Patepsio Distillery uh, are, uh, will all be beautified as well as part of this project, and then that section of Oklahoma Avenue uh, that typically gets closed down for smaller events, uh, will be uh, modified slightly so that it won't just be asphalt. It's actually gonna be, at least the plan is to have uh, pavers there and then also retractable bollards, so that it's a lot easier to close off and make uh, make pedestrian for for events and such. Um, so that's the the basics of of the project.
And can you explain the importance of why using the ARCA funds is important for this year?
Uh, yeah, yeah, if we don't have them obligated by the end of the calendar year, then uh, the federal government will come in and take them away from us.
Right, and then we won't have any funding to do this project.
Correct.
Right.
So you need to be obligated not spent.
Yeah, yeah, we have until the end of twenty twenty six to actually spend the money. Um, and again, I think the uh, in the bid documents, the timeline is no no greater than s- um, six months for this project. Uh, again, once we have a contractor on board, we'll know exactly what that timeline looks like for a completion of construction. So I'm not really worried about. Uh, again, once we have a contractor on board, we'll know exactly uh what that timeline looks like for completion of construction. So, I'm not really worried about the uh spend-by date, but certainly the obligation date has to be done by the end of the year.
And you'll coordinate that.
Bollards or repli- uh removable and insertable bollards?
We, we want the ones that actually just dropped out into the street. Now, they're manual, so there's not a, it's not a, yeah, it's not the fancy switch, then they just kinda runs.
Which is expensive and aeroprene, is why I was asking. Alright, nevermind.
Manual and retractable.
Loving it, loving it.
Uh. Try to coordinate that with our farmers' markets and activities in the springtime and try to do our best.
Yeah, the DSC knows it's coming. Again, uh, until we have a contractor, we don't know exactly how long the project will take. Uh, obviously, you know, we can phase exactly how the construction goes. The idea of uh, you know, starting with the parking lot in Baldwin Drive would be the priority so that we can actually have that area open for the farmer's market.
So, with the expansion of Baldwin Drive, are we looking at all of Oklahoma becoming one-way in that section as opposed to two ways?
N- no, we, we still have it as, as two-way right now.
Any other questions for Joe?
Nope. Uh, this Friday, we will be, so about a year ago, the council approved a work order to uh look at the uh reuse potential of the Cannery Building in South Branch Park. Uh, I'm happy to say on Friday, we'll finally be kicking that project off. Um, so again, we'll have a, a meeting with our consultants, uh representative from Howard County, a couple of uh town employees, uh, and again, we'll uh start the process of figuring out exactly what that timeline looks like for uh completion of that project. But again, uh, just as a reminder, uh, that project is paid for from a capital grant that we had received a little over a year ago, actually almost two years ago now. Um, so a million dollars, um roughly, um, a third of that will pay for the um uh conceptualization work and contract or construction documents for uh the reuse of that building, and then the rest of that money will just go into the actual construction.
So, uh, just a recap on it, will this include uh sewer uh as part, so there'll be civil drawings that come?
Yeah, so as part of the conceptualization phase, we are looking at utilities for that area. We do know that uh sewer is gonna be very difficult.
Right.
So, in all likelihood, it's gonna be a, a creative solution for what it's gonna be. It's probably not gonna be uh, you know, a sewer line that's run there. It's gonna be something along the lines of, you know, composting toilets or just hookups for uh, you know, portable toilets one way or another, so that when there's events, it's something that can easily hooked into. Um, but to have public bathrooms there available all the time is probably not likely, but like I said, we'll, we'll figure that out when we get through the um the conceptualiz- conceptualization.
And water will be figured out too. I imagine getting in a well in there is not super easy either.
Well, no, actually, I think, I think a well is actually, is easy. I think the, finding potable water is, is not the concern as it is to how do you get rid of the waste.
Okay.
Especially if it's in a flood.
Will be composting toilets.
Right.
Year-round. All the time.
This helps you with the composting things that you'd like, yeah.
Just another initiative. Um, the um, uh, real uh quick thank you to uh St. Paul's Church uh over the weekend. They did do their um cleanup along Ubrek Road. Um, so again, I know that's something annually they do, and you know, this past weekend, they, they, they uh took that on and did that, so just wanna publicly acknowledge uh St. Paul's and say thank you for uh for the cleanup efforts down there. And then, uh, last but not least, uh, and I know Craig is uh coming up to give his treasure report in a second. Now, we are having interviews this week for the uh soon-to-be vacant treasure deposition. Um, and again, we'll obviously keep apprised of uh of how these interviews go.
Yeah, I bet if he changed his mind, we would just.
I keep asking.
Get back, back to work.
Passing.
Windows closing?
Nope.
Do you know what happened over the summer in Florida? There was like this really big storm, yeah. And you really wanna move?
They're gonna happen every three months now.
I will, I will, um, to argue that my brother lives in western North Carolina and it's creamy, so it's like scary everywhere.
Not where I live.
But fully known.
I don't remember anything happening.
It's a pretty mild summer.
Yeah, it was a.
Thank God for all those environmental protection policies we have in place. Step forward, please, Mr. Treasurer. Let's hear all about it.
So, Craig, just before you go, uh, Joe, I also wanted to say thank you uh to whoever it was, probably Derek and his folks, for moving the sign uh on Oklahoma. So, I know we'd asked about that. I noticed that it was done, and I just wanted to recognize that uh that it was completed, and we really appreciate it. It is in a much better location right before you get into the traffic and right before the person that um had stated that they had an issue with people going by their house at thirty, forty, fifty miles an hour. So, hopefully, it helps with redu- reduction of issues from the police force up that way. Time will tell, but uh I know for me, I, I drove by it the other day, you know, a little uh disclosure here, twenty-seven, I was like, oh crap, I need to slow down. And then, I, the next couple of times, nineteen, so it kept it in my mind.
The new kid is on the job, trust me.
Yeah.
I, I will say this, too, shortly after it was relocated, I drove up, uh, I can't remember if I was going to look at that sign or just something else along Oklahoma, but there was a uh parent and several kids that were running past the sign. So, it was, uh, it's not only a deterrent, but it's also now a feature.
Right. There you go. More reason to slow down.
There isn't a person sitting at this table that hasn't tried to do that themselves. Okay, I have. Come on up there, Craig, please.
I'll try like a baseball, like.
It absolutely will, yep. Gotta be home at least twelve miles an hour.
That'd be cool. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council, public. This time I'd like to present the October Treasury's report. Um, I wanna quickly point out, I do not have a QR code, so you manually have to go to our website to see, see the Treasury's report.
You'll have to develop, you, you send me the URL, I'll send you a QR code for it.
I guess.
It's up to you.
Probably no one's gonna, well, you wouldn't do that. Anyway, and just like that, we're one-third of the way through uh fiscal year, or in percentages, that would be thirty-three point thirty-three percent, which is moving fast. Uh, looking at the revenue and expenditure report, uh, we see that the revenue is pretty much equals expend, not here, you can't see the bottom. Revenue is pretty much equal uh the expenses at this point in time, which is pretty good shape considering we were um spending money already on, of course, the liability, the workman's comp insurance, as well as we just did the street paving project, which obviously wasn't cheap. So, kinda used up some of the monies there. Uh, in terms of revenues, of course, the two largest sources that are up there are real estate and, damn it, the property tax is not up there. So, the real estate and the property tax, believe that, uh, is running like totally hand-in-hand from a year ago, which is pretty good. Um, so, the next hit will be probably to be income taxes towards the end of November, beginning of December. And then for that, we should see another distribution of the property taxes at the end of December, early January, so it'll keep up with the expenses that are rolling right now. Uh, in terms of the check register, notable expenditures, obviously, uh, the ten-eight emergency vehicles and the new Highland Auto together for the new PE vehicles totaled a hundred thirteen thousand. Um, we did, of course, the CPE project I just mentioned, two eighty. Uh, Herman Restoration eighteen for obviously the gatehouse porch uh restoration. Uh, I think it was Petries, Petrie, not Petries Junkyard, twenty-two for the uh used skid loader for the power washer. Uh, the Ravens should beat Steelers this weekend. Uh, the Carroll County Commissioners, we spent six grand there, trying to catch up on the water sur with the uh Libs Grill property. Uh, and that's pretty much the October report.
Oh, slick.
As I see that, yeah.
When's your last day?
You barely get through, but you did.
I'm not sure what you thought about, but anyways. Out there, Joe, I could say something no one would be paying attention to me.
You're gonna use on two things, the game and that bet.
Is there any questions at uh this time with the October exclaiming Treasury's report?
Good deal, me neither. Anyone else down here? Good, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Um, the auditor is still coming in off and on? Is that accurate?
Yes, there's, well, not coming in, but.
Worked, wrapped, it was finished, and this is doing commercials though, and he shouldn't, she shouldn't be here for the phone. Not end of November, but beginning of December.
December meeting, first meeting December.
I haven't met with her yet.
She trusts you, I guess.
Okay, well, we can talk. Um, here we go. Hmm, that brings us to our public safety report. Lieutenant Kilgore.
Good morning, afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Chalked right in the middle of No Shave November, as you can tell, so normally don't look this wooly. Uh, we're gonna talk about the public safety report highlights from October twenty-fifth through November third. Um, in the realm of community policing, we had some extra officers out patrolling for Halloween. Um, I was out, as were um two other officers. Um, our auxiliary didn't make it for whatever reason, but handed out lots of goodies and interacted with lots of folks. No issues to report. Um, sworn-in auxiliary officers uh participated in Craft Beer Festival on Main Street on November the second, and I can say it was a very long day. Uh, that was very well attended, also no issues there with a great job by our sworn-in auxiliary officers for manning this event. Um, notably, the state police sent three Maryland State Police troopers and the sheriff's department uh had one deputy, which is very needed and appreciated. And uh election night, lots of uh foot patrols at the middle school for that. Um, I, I was inside two or three times and spoke to one of the gentlemen in charge just to see if they needed like an escort with the ballots, but it, it was very uneventful there, so that was good. Uh, notable cases, um, not necessarily criminal event to speak of, but on November first, we had um excellent work performed by Barbara Prozig and Andrew Jacobs. Um, Barbara fielded a phone call from a uh juvenile youth that is um known to us, and, and this, this young person has a, a very good relationship with uh Officer Hoppa. Um, he called to talk to her, obviously she wasn't working, um, but he reported to Barbara that while hiking, um, a rock face back on the railroad tracks, he fell and banged his head. Um, Officer Jacobs responded to the area and walked about a mile through the woods, down the tracks, and found him. And based on his assessment and his, his um thorough knowledge of EMS, decided that um we needed to call in the troops, so uh, fire department and EMS personnel arrived and determined that the, the kid needed to be flown out, so uh, they had to hoist him because of where he was in the woods. Um, so they picked him up, brought him up, and then ended up flown to shock trauma. So, that was uh, he was treated, released, I think the day after, um, so great job by them. And with uh Officer Jacobs coordinating a very multifaceted response for fire EMS, so that was good stuff. And administratively, we are happy to report that Corporal Barrett has completed for our uh CIT training, which brings our total up to four officers that are CIT trained. Um, she graduated along with nine other uh police and dispatch and detention center personnel, so we have ten more out on the street that CIT serve, so that's good.
And for the edification of the public, CIT? CIT stands for?
Um, Critical Incident Team.
Thank you.
Cause it took me a second. I'm, ooh, if I don't remember this, I'm gonna just walk one out.
I really wasn't planning on putting you on the spot.
No, it's okay. Ed, you, you got me there. But we're good, we, we figured it out. Um, so that is the assessment. Do you want me to go through the calls of service like I normally do? We don't do that anymore.
It's not necessary. I mean.
This is my first time doing it since we changed.
Appreciate you. We all reviewed it and it's there for public's vision.
Comments or concerns about calls for service?
I wanna say a comment um with your community service. So, the young gentleman that fell,
Mm-hmm.
he felt comfortable enough to call the police department?
He did.
And I, I commend that to all of the officers.
That, that has everything to do with Officer Hoppa. Um, Officer Hoppa, we have dealt with this uh young person enough that we were there a lot, and she built a very good rapport with the young man. Um, he tends to or she tends to um like pick his favorite depending on what the response is, and, and luckily for us, she was the one that threw him out, so um.
But does that mean that they called your direct line, not nine-one-one perhaps?
First, yeah.
Yeah, that.
Which is.
So, I would, I, I would say in the future, nine-one-one, but I don't, I, I don't think this person, I think it was kinda panicked, didn't know what else to do, it was like, well, let me call.
No, but the fact that they would know our number to call it, like, that's huge. I think that's what you're saying.
Saying is that you're, the community servicing that the police officers and the auxiliary are doing with our young community,
Yeah.
it, it opens the door that they feel comfortable calling.
No, she, she's wonderful with that. Absolutely, absolutely. I appreciate, I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else for Lieutenant?
I do have one. Um, there's a line item for assist other agency at um, it says SPD two oh nine, but there's no corresponding
Riverview Trail.
There's no corresponding report for it.
Is that the one you just reported on?
Uh, that's the one I just reported.
That's the one you're reporting on, okay. Okay, thanks. That clarifies that.
It's because there's no like criminal charge or anything over there, that's why that box is in.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Thanks for catching that uh for us. Anyone else?
Nope.
Alright, great. That brings us to council and uh commission liaison updates, if any, are available? Nothing from Mark. How about you?
Yep, uh, so we had a planning commission meeting on November fourth. Uh, there, it was a quick meeting. Uh, two things got approved. There was a residential addition, uh, met all zoning requirements, uh, sealed through with uh very easily. And then the second one, which may be of more interest, uh, was in reference to the parks, uh, park side at Warfield Stormwater Management Plan. Uh, we did see an accountee approval letter for that. Uh, the county approved it. I believe the assessment was done the week of October fourteenth to eighteenth, and the letter was dated October twenty-first. They've approved the plan. Uh, they are going to need to uh use the other property, the enclave property, in order to make up the difference uh for uh stormwater management. Um, and they are moving forward with the, there's a couple of smaller, smallish repairs that they have to do at the park side property. Um, they're going, they're getting message out to the homeowners association so that all the community will know uh when those repairs occur, and then we will see the plan again when it comes back around at the planning commission. When uh they're showing, you know, you know, the next version of the plan, we'll be able to see what their plans are from a stormwater management perspective. And right now, we did ask, like, are you gonna hedge? Like, what are you going to do from a planning perspective? They are going to um provide more storm, at least right now, you know, things can change, but as of right now, the plan is to provide a little bit more than what they actually need in order to make up for the delta between the two uh properties that are adjacent to each other.
So, nothing over at current, current park side um with respect to the existing management of the stormwater is changing?
Uh, they are doing some changes, so there's uh a couple of inlets that are going in uh near uh the uh uh the, the park area, uh, like the playground area, and so they're changing some things there. They're putting up a barrier to help water sort of funnel into an area a little bit better, uh, but that doesn't make up the entirety of what the issues are. They have to make up for some more, um, you know.
Understood.
More stormwater management.
I'm just wondering if that um, uh, many uh Grand Canyon was going to still be in existence out there uh behind the second street?
Uh.
Sounds like it is.
I don't know.
It, it's just, there's just like a, it's just, there's, like, the entire uh grassy area is like a, a stormwater retention pond that seemingly never has any water in it, and it's um, it really minimizes the green space for the kids to play in. Um, i- it's.
Yeah, I mean, are you talking about the, like, the, cause again, in, in front of most of those townhouses are all, like, they're all bio soils, like.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that is what I'm speaking of, but one is extra-large. Um, and and it is between, it is in the area, the grassy area in between. Um, well, i- i- if you're at the playground, at the, at the pot lot there,
Mm-hmm.
um, it's behind you if you turn your back to the, to the uh houses. Um, not on Conley Alley, but the, the, behind you at that point. So, um, I, I was just curious if this was gonna improve, improve that or give the opportunity for any kind of um, you know, natural landscaping that would in and of itself be uh a stormwater um management component instead of just the swells.
No.
Trees and stuff.
Yeah, like plantings and.
No, that, that's not currently the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I had one, I'm sorry, I had one, I had one other thing that's not related to planning commission. So, there was some striping done on Oklahoma Ave. Um, as you sort of take the turn, uh, you go to the stop sign, and then you sort of dip down the hill, and I don't know if you're tracking or not tracking, but there's some cars that park along the side of the road, and they take up the, almost the entirety of that. and they take up the, almost the entirety of that lane. So that, I don't remember the last time that that was striped. Maybe it was, but it was really dull because we hadn't repaved it in a long time. I've had a couple of people ask why, why was it striped to begin with? And then there's a lot of folks, including myself, that actually cross over the line to go, to get their mail at the bottom of the hill before they either go up into the backwoods area or into a couple other properties, mine and my neighbor's. So we're just sort of wondering why it was striped, was there a purpose? And then there's been, I've mentioned before here that there is a little bit of a safety issue coming over the top of that hill when the cars are parked right at the top of the hill, so it's really hard to see over that crest. And so now you have to literally cross over the lane, and I don't know if there's a police issue with that, with the double-lane.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the, the whole reason we striped that was to, was to show that is, those are lanes of traffic and it's not for parking.
Right.
So, you know, again, if, if people are, are still parking there, even though it's clear that they're blocking a lane, then I guess signage would be next to say that there is no parking along Oklahoma Ave.
So that there can be tickets placed.
Alright.
Without the signage, we can't do that.
Right.
Alright, so just.
Are you, you're talking about down towards the Harmon Lane?
Yeah, so as you go, so as you go, right as you're about to go down the road for Oklahoma, down towards the cul-de-sac, um, there's a, there's a, I don't know whose property it is, I haven't paid attention that closely, but it's, uh, there's a car that parks there often. It's a black sedan.
Yeah, without signage, there's really not a lot we can do, but.
Yeah, but it, right now, in order to pass it, you literally have to go on the other side of the street. And whereas before, when it wasn't lined, you, you just, you just sort of weave, right? And you take it slow while you go down, and it's worse when it, when the sun's out, right? So in the morning, you know, whenever the sun is rising right in that location, that can be one of the hotspots, or as it's, the sun's setting at the end of the day, the opposite direction, that's when the big challenges are.
Again, it was, the, the whole reason for striping was to delineate that there are two, two lanes there. It's not an area for parking. So again, if signage has to be next, then.
So if the sign will say, here's your sign. Okay. Councilmember Gura?
Yes, Parks and Rec meeting on Thursday, November twenty-first, and Santa on Main Street on December seventh, from three to six. Do we have?
Tree lighting.
Two forty-five.
I'm out of the country, I'm not there.
Everyone else is?
Two forty-five.
I'm, I'm out of state that day.
Nice trucking.
I am.
I'm out of county. I'll be there.
Anna will be there?
I believe so.
Okay, maybe you will.
I'll be there as long as I can.
But as long as you gotta.
I, I have my friend's daughter's wedding to attend and.
Don't be late for that.
And Anna's, Anna's doing the, if, if you run, if you have to leave, Anna's doing the lighting?
No, Santa will be ready to light the tree at six o'clock. That's the plan.
I, I understand the plan, mayor. I'm just wanna manage expectations.
Well, the expectation is, is that Santa will light the tree at six o'clock.
Yeah, but we've.
There's gonna be a lot of disappointment.
Santa has not been consistent.
Santa will have to be consistent this year.
It's gonna be a lot of disappointment.
Santa needs to run on a candy cane.
Consistently consistent. Got it.
It will be, it will be important that the children realize that the line stops at a time that will allow the last person in the line to get through the caboose and be done by five fifty-eight.
Are you managing the back of the line?
I'll be glad to. I wanted to the years before, but everybody tells me, oh, the kids need to see Santa. Well, they need to come sooner.
As a parent of two daughters, there'll be no crying whatsoever.
I mean, there's three hours, right? Doesn't Santa arrive at three?
There is, three to six.
Okay, so at, at.
Grinchy.
At the Grinchy, it's just expectations. At five forty-five?
You'll, you'll be cutting off the line.
Alright, let's point a horse, point a order.
With a scimitar.
Get it back going here.
Okay, so we will greet Santa with Mrs. Claus and Frosty and the Grinch and Sparky and Coats and food. Cans, bring cans, we'll have hot chocolate, and the train will be open.
Santa is arriving via.
Fire truck.
At three o'clock. Three o'clock.
Everybody three o'clock.
Come early, or we'll kick you out of line.
Be in line by five thirty to see Santa. Period end.
Is that up on our Facebook page? Is that up on our Facebook page yet?
Yes.
It is.
So.
Well, not, not the end line.
Santa.
Not the, not the.
The line to see Santa closes at five thirty. It's that simple. Those are the expectations.
Sparky will start enforcing the line cutoff, so that'll, that'll take her out.
Perfect.
Or the Grinch. It might be better to put the Grinch up here. There'll be movies, there'll be music, it will be a wonderful event, and the mayor will be very happy.
When we light the tree at six o'clock. Here we go.
Alright, uh, DSC is meeting a week early due to the Thanksgiving holiday, so, and I will be hearing from early, a little bit more. So it'll be Wednesday, the twentieth, at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, DSC, they have the Dewali celebration on November first. That was well-attended and a lot of positive feedback from that. Uh, for the DSC building on seventy-six eleven Main Street, progress is continuing with outdoor improvements and indoor, but we're working on renovation completion in twenty twenty-five with a guided tour for council at a date to be announced. Craft Beer Festival was well-attended. We exceeded expectations with that and no issues. And the Happy Thon fundraising campaign is live on our website. We hope people will consider supporting this venture that has been very positive the last several years for the community.
Thank you.
Another question. The announcements from DSC of the two businesses moving in, but there haven't been like rough open dates or, so there's just.
Cause it's still way, it's still way out there.
Okay, so we're not, not anytime soon should people expect either of those businesses to be open?
Not within the next sixty days, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, the mayor has a couple of updates, and one of them is that we collected two hundred and ninety pumpkins. Um, and by we, I mean the Hatton Animal Rescue Foundation received those many pumpkins from the residents. And I looked it up, an average mature pumpkin weighs thirteen pounds, so that is over one point five tons of food waste kept out of the landfill and into the bellies of forty-plus happy horses, goats, sheeps, sheeps? Sheep.
Sheep.
Sheep. Sheep. Goats and donkeys.
Cool.
That's great.
And while I'm at it, I'd like to encourage people to visit the animal rescue in Glen Elbe in Howard County and perhaps become inspired to volunteer or foster, sponsor, or adopt a furry friend. At any given time, there are seventy of them there. Okay, here we go. We are having a closed session this evening, and I will read as mandated. The meeting.
Before we go into that, I would just like to, uh, what, compliment the mayor on the remembrance celebration, Sunday at four o'clock, was very nice.
It was, it was a wonderful turnout. Thank you.
Short and sweet, and to the point, so thanks for having that. Appreciate that.
I saw you there, and I appreciate you and Mark being there. Councilman Dyer, excuse me. And yeah, it, it, and all, all the credit goes to the Gatehouse Museum curator and staff for planning that. I just happened to take the reins at, at four o'clock, so, but it was great. I enjoyed it, and it was a great turnout. And we'll be doing it again, I think, next year at the townhouse this time, correct? Mostly.
It's a long ways away.
Yes.
I think that's the plan. Yeah. Okay, so, um, the, we are having a closed session this evening, and this meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five B and number eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, pending litigation or filed lawsuits. So I wanna call for a five-minute recess to allow the gallery to clear upon my gavel strike. We will regather, we will reconvene in five minutes in open session. Thank you, everyone.